This hearing is called to order. This is the public hearing of the City Council Committee on the Disabled and Special Needs. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear testimony on Resolutions Number 150026 and 150027. My name is Dennis O'Brien. I'm Chair of the Committee, and I recognize the presence of a quorum of the Committee members. We have, to my right, Councilwoman Maria Keonah Sanchez; to my far-left, Councilwoman Blackwell; and to my immediate-left, Councilwoman Bass. First, what I would like to do is have the clerk read the title of Resolution 15026 into the record.
Can you guys hear? Resolution Number 150026, authorizing Council's Committee on the Disabled and Special Needs to hold public hearings to examine the Philadelphia Autism Project's final report and strategic plan.
And I want to thank Councilwoman Blackwell at the end of the last hearing where we considered considerable testimony, valuable testimony. She suggested that we report the study out, but I had already adjourned the committee. So it was the intention of this committee to take that formal vote. So if there's no one in the chamber to give additional testimony to Resolution 150026, and with the indulgence of my colleagues, is there anyone here to offer additional testimony on that resolution? Seeing none, then I will ask my colleagues to briefly go into recess so that we can adopt the final report and then go back into the public hearing and begin testimony on Resolution 150027. So the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez for a motion on the final report of the Philadelphia Autism Project as it was considered by the Committee at the public hearing held on February 2nd, 2015.
I move that the Committee on Disabled and Special Needs adopt the report from the Philadelphia Autism Project, which was submitted to the Committee on February 2, 2015.
Second by Councilwoman Bass. And it has been moved and properly seconded into the final report of the Philadelphia Autism Project as it was considered by this Committee on February 2nd, 2015, and on February 27th, 2015, be issued to the Committee, by this Committee, to the Council. All those in favor of this motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. The report will be issued to the Council for the next session of the City Council. And we will now go back into session, into the public hearing. Will the clerk please read the Resolution 150027?
Resolution Number 150027, authorizing Council's Committee on the Disabled and Special Needs to hold public hearings regarding the state of educational opportunities and career development in Philadelphia for people with physical, psychiatric, sensory, intellectual, and developmental disabilities.
Thank you. I just have some opening remarks, and then I'll recognize my colleagues. Try to keep these under an hour. Good morning. Thank you to everyone for being here today as we examine the state of educational opportunities and career development for individuals with physical, sensory, psychiatric, intellectual, and developmental disabilities. Educational attainment and gainful employment are crucial for an individual's ability to live a meaningful, productive, and independent life. Yet for individuals with disabilities, educational attainment and permanent employment are often out of reach due to factors such as discrimination, a lack of encouragement to go to school or to work, and little support services. What I'd also like to do is concentrate on the wonderful strengths and contributions that individuals with disabilities bring to the workforce and to the educational community. They possess such a wonderful work ethic. And I remember last year, there was an individual living with autism when we had all those terrible snowstorms. This individual made it to work when nobody else made it to work. And he did the job of three of his colleagues, which became an incentive for his three colleagues that they better show up. But they're focused, and they're committed, they're responsible, they have aptitudes in different areas depending on their disability, they have skills in technology. And there's a company, SAP, who is now very interested in the brains and the minds of individuals living with autism. And they are not only hiring those individuals, but they are committed to clinical assessments and changing the environment of the workforce. So these individuals are wonderfully successful and included in the workforce. And up in the Northeast, there's an aviation, aerial aviation company that has an individual living with autism. And it's high-resolution cameras, he sees everything in the margins. But the most remarkable thing that they've told me is he improved the workforce because his loyalty, his commitment, all the attributes that I'm talking about here today. But there's no prejudice, there's no discrimination. Everybody feeds off of his positive energy, and he makes the workplace so wonderfully successful. As we look, there's one successful employer that I would like to celebrate, and that's the Philadelphia Phillies. We went to them with Dr. Wendy Ross, and we trained up over 300 employees. And from Aramark to the ticket takers, to the security guys, to the people that break the fields and the Fanavision, everybody that you can think of was trained to be autism-sensitive. As opposed to New York, where they just took one little section of their stadium and said, "We're going to put the autism families over here with their family members." Our whole stadium was autism-friendly, and we challenged the New York Stinkin' Mets on a nationally televised game so we could beat them on the field, and we could also race to the top of the ladder and beat them in our approach, our inclusive approach to individuals with disabilities living with autism. And we recognized them as the employer of the year. And initially, the Autism Society of America, when they came up with that wonderful idea, the Phillies said, "We don't know if we deserve that because we don't employ anybody." As we were going through the training, it was remarkable how many individuals living with autism were already employed in the employ of the Philadelphia Phillies. That should serve as a wonderful spirit of inspiration for all of us. And I wish a lot of employers were here today so that they could recognize the wonderful opportunity that is afforded to their workplace if they employ individuals with disabilities. So different disabilities probably require different supports. And the data on educational attainment among individuals with disabilities is dismal. In 2012, only one-third of individuals with disabilities obtained a high-school diploma or its equivalent, and 22% had less than a high-school education. This is especially troubling because we know with individuals with disabilities are capable of advancing their education, but many require supports to do so. What is more troubling is that we know education is the key to career opportunities that steer individuals away from a life of isolation and poverty. Those with disabilities are no different than those without disabilities in that higher levels of education make them more likely to be employed. In 2012, and I'm not going to kill you with statistics, but only 32% of working-age people with disabilities were in the labor force compared to 78% of the general population. Unemployment of Philadelphians with a disability is one of the key factors in Philadelphia's deep poverty rate of 12.2%, which is twice the national average. I look forward to hearing from the panel addressing transition services because we know effective transition services can be the key to ensuring individuals with disabilities or on career trajectory. These services should level the playing field. So youth and young adults with disabilities are given the same chance to benefit from earlier work experiences by building their resumes, expanding their networks, and gaining soft skills such as effective communication, time management, being a team player, and demonstrating a strong work ethic. Working to increase educational attainment and integrated employment opportunities for individuals with disabilities is the right thing to do for many reasons. There is also a legal grounding for this as well, under the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, the 1999 Olmsted Supreme Court decision, and the ADA Amendments Act of 2008. You'll hear witnesses today talk about these legal mandates, including a recent mandate from the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services, where they will no longer support segregated work settings through their home and community-based waiver. It's clear this issue must be a top priority in Philadelphia. And again, I'll just go off-script, and I'll ask individuals to consider when they testify, in case I forget to ask this question, that we have individuals that have the benefit of MAWD when the Corbett Administration advanced Healthy Pennsylvania. They're individuals with medical assistance working with disabilities. And if they got a job, they still need those supports. But under the original submission of Healthy Pennsylvania, the MAWD was taken off the table. So if you get a job, you lose your supports, and you can't be successful in a job. So we want to talk about those incentives and disincentives, and the Social Security and Social Security disabilities. There are agencies, federal agencies, that are mandated to counsel individuals on those supports so they can maintain the level of support while leaving Social Security. But the fear is, with many of our individuals, is it's either-or. And that's why they're subjected to poverty for indeterminate periods of time. Because if they get a job, then they just get right up to that poverty level. If they don't have a job, then they're in poverty. And it's remarkable, when we talk about our poverty levels in Philadelphia, the disability community is a huge contributing factor to that. It's not just the immigration, the immigrants and others that are not gainfully employed for one reason or another. It's our individuals with disabilities that create that challenge for all of us. So our witnesses today will share personal experiences, they will identify the key issues, they'll highlight what's working in Philadelphia and what barriers exist, and most importantly, they'll offer concrete strategies for moving forward. Rates of employment with individuals with disabilities in federal, state, and local governments are almost identical to rates of employment of workers with no disabilities. 15% of individuals with disabilities working in government compared to 14% of individuals without disabilities work in government. So it's clear to me that the City of Philadelphia can lead the way in terms of creating internships and permanent employment opportunities for individuals with disabilities. Today's hearing will lay the foundation for this important work. Do we have any opening remarks?
No.
With my colleague's permission, I will call the first panel. Rose Evans, who was a consumer student at Lincoln University; Emily Scott, who's the Program Director and Educational Specialist at Horizon House Inc.; Ed Kelly, who's a self-advocate and employee at Spin; and Richard Greenfield, who's the Chief Operating Officer at Spin. Would you please all come forward to present testimony? And I would like to take this opportunity, as our witnesses are assembling at the table, to recognize my colleague, Councilman O., who has joined us. Councilman, do you have any remarks that you would like to?
No one can say you're better than you.
Thank you, Councilman. I say it long, though. So, Rose Evans, if you would like to start off, whenever you're ready, if you would, would you please state your name for the record, and then you can begin your testimony? And please try to move the microphone close to you so it can be picked up.
Good morning. My name is Rose. Good morning, Councilman O'Brien, members of the Committee on Disabilities and Special Needs. Again, my name is Rose Evans. I am a wife, a mother of three daughters, and six lovely granddaughters. I am dyslexic.
It's on.
Once again, good morning, Councilman O'Brien, and members of the Committee on Disabilities and Special Needs. Again, my name is Rose Evans. I am a wife, a mother of three daughters, and six lovely granddaughters. I am dyslexic. Once again, good morning, Councilman O'Brien, and members of the Committee on Disabilities and Special Needs. My name is Rose Evans. I am a wife, a mother of three daughters, and a grandmother of six lovely granddaughters. I am dyslexic, and I have been diagnosed with PTSD. But with the help of my support team at Education Plus, I am presently a junior at Lincoln University, studying for my bachelor's degree in Behavioral Health and Human Services. I would like to give thanks to the Creator for bringing us together today so that I may testify and advocate at this hearing regarding the state of educational opportunities and career development in Philadelphia for individuals with disabilities. I want to thank Emily Scott and Kathy Copeland for inviting me to say a few words about my experiences with Horizon House and the Education Plus program. From the very first time I walked through the doors of Horizon House in 2010, everyone was very kind and supportive. For example, my counselor, Sarah Neal, helped me to believe in myself and explained all the opportunities that was available to me if I applied myself. And she also explained to me the values of being a team player. Sarah introduced me to Jerry Howard and Emily Scott. And for the last five years, they have been a resource of constant support for me. They have helped me to improve my writing skills with one-on-one tutoring sessions. They have connected me with the grant programs such as Pennsylvania Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, OVR, that I needed to help pay for my education. They have provided the counseling that I needed in order to understand the culture of college environment. And they have taught me to network and utilize other support services such as Learning Ally and Dragon's Natural Speech to maintain my academic success. I am motivated, and I am a survivor. I believe that education is the key to success. I am pleased to say that my family and friends are there for me and are constantly encouraging me to complete my bachelor's degree. I am a survivor because I ask and I pray for help. In June of 2000, I was on my way to work, and I was in a very serious septic accident. In a matter of minutes, my life changed for the worse. I couldn't walk for months. I was diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD. So naturally, I was depressed and suffered from anxiety and panic attacks. It took years of struggle to work through my depression and disabilities. The good news is, I am here today, and I am able to share my story with you all. Because of Education Plus Support Team, I am able to continue to visualize a promising light at the end of a long tunnel. In 2010, I enrolled in Community College of Philadelphia. I was excited, to say the least. But I needed accommodations to help me to move forward, such as tape recorders to record lectures, tutors to help me understand my assignments, and class note-takers, also class note-takers, along with internet and software access on my home computer. The counselors at CCP was very helpful. They connected me with Horizon House and the Education Plus program. Together, they provided the accommodations that I needed. I transferred from Community College of Philadelphia to Lincoln University in the fall semester of 2013. My education plans are to complete my studies at Lincoln University and graduate in 2016. And of course, to make the dean's list. My career goals are to use my bachelor's degree in the counseling capacity, working with individuals with disabilities, so that I can give back and contribute to society. I will also use my professional skills to teach young people to be passionate about their education because they are our future and our future leaders. I would like, once again, to thank the Chair of this Committee, Councilman O'Brien, and the members of the Committee, also Emily Scott and Kathy Copeland for giving me this opportunity to advocate for Education Plus. Peace, love, and blessings. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rose. And what I'm going to do is ask all of the individuals at the table to testify, and then we'll open it up for questions. So Emily, if you could identify yourself for the record, and then proceed with your testimony.
Okay. My name is Emily Saltkevers-Scott. I'm the Program Coordinator of Education Plus. Good morning, Chairman O'Brien, and members of the Disabled and Special Needs Committee. I've been in the field of mental health for about, over 20 years. I've been with Supported Employment Program of Horizon House for about nine years, and I've been in my present position as Education Coordinator for four years. At Education Plus, our overall mission is we strive to enhance the quality of life of vulnerable citizens in Philadelphia. We do this by focusing our work on supporting local college adult students with mental health disabilities to successfully meet their goals of graduating from colleges, universities, and technical training institutes in the five-county area. Our students range in age from 18 to, well, we really don't have a cutoff. They have a variety of disabilities, including depression, bipolar disorder, anxiety, phobias, schizophrenia, schizoaffective disorder, I didn't put, and learning disabilities. Often, these students also have what they call co-occurring disorders and issues, including they might have criminal backgrounds, they might have addiction issues, physical disabilities, vision disabilities, they might have poor social support. We've been in existence at Education Plus for 10 years. Right now, we receive some funding from the Department of Behavioral Health. We have 10 students at present that we get fee-for-service through the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, OVR, and we're working on our third three-year grant from the Pew Trust for vulnerable citizens in Philadelphia. It could possibly be our last year with Pew, and we're hoping to expand our OVR students. Anyway, the students with limited resources and disabilities often feel different than other students. They might not realize how important their voice is in the classroom and off-campus. The support we provide these students helps them to level the field, so to speak. We let them know that they are not alone and that we're there to support them and talk. Talk if they feel like they don't fit in, if they're struggling in coursework, they want to give up, they might be having trouble with a professor, they don't get along with other students, they just need some encouragement. We encourage support, and we celebrate our students' achievements as well. Our goal is to work with these students to become increasingly independent. Our goal is really to work ourselves out of a job so they don't really need us anymore. We're a mobile education and emotional support program for students at all levels of post-secondary education. At present, we serve about 40 students at the local schools, including Community College of Philadelphia, Lincoln University, Holy Family University, Temple University. I have one student at Empire Beauty School, another at Lincoln Tech. We've had students at Pierce College, LaSalle, just a lot of the schools in the area, and we keep reaching out to more. One thing, Councilman O'Brien, I'm going a little off-script, you mentioned about in the Phillies organization, how they said, "Well, we don't really have people with autism that work here." And you said, "Well, actually, you probably do, and you don't even know it." And that's how we feel about students that we find on campus that might have disabilities. Some colleges might say, "You know, we don't really have a lot of students with disabilities." Well, you know what? They are there, and they need that support. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you for that story you told.
Thank you.
So, let's see. We help with a lot of different things. Some students need help with the work, some don't. Time management, organization techniques, social skills, study assistance, transferring from one program to another, finding scholarships, connecting with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. We help with housing concerns. Sometimes our students do end up homeless or with limited food, and we help with those things, finding resources on and off-campus, including the Disability Resource Centers on the campuses and the counseling centers. We just help negotiate the academic landscape overall. We help students move through financial aid process, insist with appeals, excuse medical withdrawals, draws, and other barriers to matriculation. We encourage students to connect with different supportive programs and offices in the city and at their schools to meet their individual needs and interests. In our 10 years of support, we've seen over 40 students graduate. Most of these students received associate's degrees, at least a third received bachelor's degrees, and several went on to receive master's degrees. Their majors included education, behavioral health, psychology, mathematics, information technology, political science, and the list goes on. In the past year, we celebrated six students graduated. Other success, we had four students, let's see how to go. Other recent student success include the fact that four students graduated in May 2014, one graduated in December 2014, two were from Temple, two from CCP, and one was from Orleans Institute in Electricity. In November, one of our community college students was invited to join Pi Theta Kappa, a National Community College Academic Honor Society. She's graduating in May of this year, and recently received an academic scholarship offer from a local nursing school program in Philadelphia. We're expecting three more graduates in May and two in August, and I'd like to invite all of you to attend our celebration, to hear more personal stories of overcoming obstacles and achieving academic success. So thank you once again, councilmembers and Councilmen O'Brien.
Thank you, Emily. I'm just going to throw in a little statistical stuff so I don't overwhelm everybody at one time. Paul Shattuck, who is at Drexel, did a longitudinal, national longitudinal transition study. And among children who had been in special education, 35% of kids with autism attended a two- or four-year college. 51% of those with a speech or language delay did so. 40% of those with a learning disability did so, and 18% of those with mental retardation did so. And this is interesting, 55% of young adults with autism had paid employment within six years of high school, while 86% of those with a speech or language impairment, 94% of those with a learning disability, and 69% of those with mental retardation. Just a little statistical information that I'll sprinkle out there for edification purposes. So now, I would like to ask Ed Kelly, who's a self-advocate and an employee at Spin, to present your testimony. Ed, would you please identify yourself and then begin your testimony?
Good morning. It's various members of the Committee. My name is Ed Kelly. I currently live and work in Philadelphia. I was diagnosed in the seventh grade with Asperger's Disorder, and I'd always had a hard time finding a direction to follow after graduation. Because school is all that I really know. What in school they tell you, what needs to be done, when to do it, and how to do it. And after graduation, there wasn't that guidance, so everything sort of fell apart. The open-ended tasks related to applications for jobs and colleges were always difficult because I struggled to motivate myself to complete them because they didn't offer much or any feedback after submission. So I found the transition out of the school environment really just left me a horrible loose end. I'd always been proficient with technology, computers, and such, to the point that if you presented me with a problem, I would find the solution or get rid of the problem. So I really wanted to work with computers because it was rewarding to learn new things and apply that knowledge. But I... But I couldn't get connected with the resources that I needed after graduation, so I was home for just about 15 months with nothing that I was doing. I graduated from Ben Salem High School, so after graduation, I was in Bucks County. I tried to connect the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, but I met with very limited success. Despite the enthusiasm of the person that was working with me, she was really just trying to push me into a college environment and not really helping me with it at all. So eventually, I dropped out of the program for a while. Then I moved into Philadelphia County, and some changes in my personal life spurred me to seek out a job again. As it happened, I had a connection at SPIN, and I was able to get an interview in October of last year for an internship in the IT department. The internship wasn't going to pay, but the goal was to get some job experience under my belt so I could apply for other jobs with some experience. As fate would have it, though, my interview really spoke for itself, and shortly thereafter, in November, I was offered the chance to do contract work, which I jumped on right away because it would look great on a resume, and I was really enjoying the work. Once again, a few weeks later, I was offered a full-time position in the Help Desk for December. And just recently, as of this week, I'm working on, working my way into promotion to programmer based on how quickly and thoroughly I've learned the various systems at SPIN. Having jobs really changed my life. I, I'm doing work that I enjoy with great people. I'm a lot more confident in myself, and I am working through a lot of my anxieties. I'm grateful to be able to support myself and have the opportunity to advance myself at a pace that I just couldn't have imagined six months ago. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ed. That testimony has been inspiring. Richard Greenfield, would you like to present testimony? Please state your name and then proceed.
Sure. Good morning, Councilman O'Brien and, and members of the committee, and thank you for inviting me to testify this morning. My name is Rich Greenfield. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at SPIN. And as you know, SPIN was founded 45 years ago to provide services to children, adults, with developmental disabilities in the Philadelphia region, and now we're also in the Lehigh Valley. Today, SPIN serves over 3,100 people in five Pennsylvania counties with more than 1,100 full-time employees. SPIN prides itself in being one of the premier providers of services for people with disabilities in Philadelphia and in the region. And I'm here today to tell you the remarkable story of Ed, our version of it, and his recent employment experience at SPIN. Ed's a high school graduate, as he just told us, and he was referred by somebody who knew SPIN very, very well and hoped that, given the opportunity and some guidance, Ed could develop into a valuable asset in SPIN's Information Technology Department. SPIN partners with many local colleges and universities and traditionally offers internship opportunities to college students each year. And I am responsible for administering and supporting internships in our IT, finance, and HR departments, and as such, I was on the interviewing team for Ed. Ed gave a great interview, and clearly, we began to see the possibility in him. SPIN offered Ed an unpaid internship, as he just mentioned, in the fall of 2014 with our IT Department Help Desk Support Group where he would work to resolve computer-related issues, support issues from employees in a customer-friendly way. The IT managers mentored Ed to ensure that he had the supports needed to help him to become a successful member of the Help Desk team. And Ed thrived in his new position. And as he honed his IT talents, he grew in confidence, as he described, and his communication skills, both written and verbal, were improving. And when an IT Help Desk position became available, a full-time position, we interviewed many external candidates, including Ed, and it was clear that Ed was the best person for the job. Ed became a full-time paid employee after just one month at SPIN. Ed took his new position seriously from the beginning. He worked hard to learn everything that he could in Help Desk field. He listened well. He did intern, he did independent research, and he asked questions of his coworkers in IT and mentors when he wasn't certain about technical issues that he needed to resolve. It quickly became apparent that Ed had great interest and proficiency, as he described, in computer hardware and software programming. And when Ed learned a computer skill, he has the ability to apply it correctly in all of the related areas. Ed received glowing praise from his managers and his fellow employees with whom he helped. Just recently, we approached Ed to gauge his interest in becoming a programmer and a database administrator. The position requires complex knowledge of computer languages and software code, which are in Ed's areas of skill set. Ed was interested, and we decided to promote him into the position with the other additional supports necessary to foster his success on the job. We paired Ed with a former programmer and database administrator who will help him with his training, and Ed will also be advancing in his education with software reference books and classes, online classes in the future. SPIN took a chance in hiring Ed as a young man with little formal training in the IT field. It provided Ed with necessary supports, guidance, and camaraderie, and all of our lives, all of our lives have been enhanced. Ed has become a valuable employee and provided living example of SPIN's values and mission, demonstrating that everyone can achieve a life of possibilities. I believe that there are many Eds out there, and many people with disabilities can and will succeed in internship programs and apprenticeship programs, given the opportunity and with the right supports in place. A non-traditional internship opened the door that clearly was not available to Ed previously. It is my hope that many other organizations would consider SPIN's approach and open doors for other exceptional people with disabilities. Thanks again, Chairman O'Brien, for inviting me today, and to the committee members for, for allowing me to speak about Ed and his great, his great job here at SPIN today.
Thank you so much. Rose, I just want to thank you for your wonderful testimony and, and the insight that you gave us as to how important the programs like Educational Plus were to your success. And Emily, I'd just like to ask you, what are the biggest barriers that you face in your work? As you, in addition to your testimony?
Okay, so I guess one barrier is, well, one barrier, oh, there's so many barriers.
Specifically, those with psychiatric disabilities and how you can help them be successful.
One thing is feeling confident, I believe, that some students might not feel that if they speak up in class that, that what they say is going to be on point, and just trying to convince them to engage in the class and maybe work in groups sometimes and have the dialogues of academia and talk about ideas. So encouraging them to have that voice is really important. But psychiatrically, also another problem comes into play when, when something happens and their, their studies fall and they need extra psychiatric help, or they might need counseling, or if they end up not going to class, that's often a big barrier, and having to get them back on track. Or another barrier is if they've had issues in the past, they, they might have had a psychiatric break when they went to college when they were 18 or something, and then they left everything, and then they have all these loans and all this stuff, and payments, things that are due, and they've grown exponentially. So helping them to, to write financial aid appeals and to fight the bureaucracy to get, get, to get back to, where they can go back to school, to get them to alleviate some of those debts that they built up is a big one.
I'd just like to follow up with that as a theme, and we obviously aren't going to get all the answers to all the questions that we have here today. But it's clear that more and more individuals with psychiatric disabilities are enrolling in college. But there's a startling statistic that 86% of them withdraw without the appropriate supports. And Mr. Greenfield, I've been involved with SPIN for time out of mind, and with the LaCinos when they started it, and, and how, I'm so happy with how it's grown over the years. But I think we're all wonderfully uplifted by the experience that you and Ed have described here today. And I think one model going forward is looking at and assessing an individual, which you obviously had knowledge of Ed, and, and you looked at his abilities. So you gave him an entry-level intermediate job and allowed him to be successful with all the supports. And, and again, as you said, I think that's a wonderful model for employers to look at as we try to make Philadelphia the first disability-friendly city on the planet. And, and Ed, I think it's you sharing your personal experience. I know that's a challenge. I know that personally, it's challenging to put everything out there. But I think it's important for all of us to recognize that when you went to, I believe it was Community College, and they just wanted to push you off into an educational setting, and here, you find a wonderful partner who recognized your wonderful talents, allowed you to be successful, and now is inviting you to become a more important part of the organization. And I was with Tim Schreiber at Special Olympics, and we were at breakout sessions over a year ago. And for the first time, Special Olympics has done the same thing that you've done at SPIN. They look at the organizational chart, and they look with, at people with special needs and how they can incorporate those individuals in meaningful jobs in their own organization. By doing that, then they remove the challenge. Why, if it's so easy to employ people, why don't you do it yourself? You're doing that. I applaud you for that. And Ed, thank you for sharing that. And do you have, Ed, anything else you want to say about your experience with SPIN? Thank you. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And first, I wanted to start out really by thanking, you know, the folks who are on the ground who are doing the work that's required to make services like SPIN and other programs and Horizon House work because my sister worked for SPIN for many, many years. And, you know, this is not an occupation that is for anyone or everyone. And it really does take a individual who has a certain level of understanding and caring and who really does want to make a difference. And so I just wanted to, number one, say thank you to, to all the folks who are really on the ground and doing the work because, like I said, it's, it's really not for everyone. The second thing I just wanted to mention is that for, you know, for both of your, your stories in terms of, you know, living with dyslexia and also with, you know, autism and, you know, it, it takes a lot to tell your story. And so I really appreciate you being here and, you know, telling what experience you have, what you've gone through, how this has affected you and your life and your family. And one of the things that I heard from both of you over and over is the, the necessary support that has enabled you to be able to be so successful. And so it really does resonate with, with myself and with the rest of the panel as we think about how can we be helpful, what can we do, and how can we support your support network as well. So those are some of the things that I think that we'll be able to take from this hearing and really find ways to try to be helpful. And also, you know, as you mentioned, your, your internships, that's something I think that, you know, as members of City Council, that's, you know, one of the tangible things that we can do as individuals to be helpful. And so I, I look forward to working with the chairman to make things like that happen here at City Council. So thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We would like to bring up the second panel. Andrea Consigni? I'm sorry? No, go ahead. Tell me what it is. Consigna. Thank you, Andrea. And Kimberly Caputo. Did I say that right? Got it. Andrea is the Director of Employment Services at SPIN. Kimberly is the Deputy Chief, Office of Specialized Services for the School District of Philadelphia. And Kathleen Fogel is the Business Services Supervisor for the School District Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. Andrea, would you please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony?
Hi, I'm Andrea Davies Consigna. Good morning, Councilman O'Brien, members of City Council, and other distinguished guests. I'm Andrea Davies Consigna, the Director of Employment Services at SPIN, a nationally recognized provider organization whose mission is to provide the highest-quality, people-first services and supports for children and adults with intellectual, developmental, and autism-spectrum disabilities so that each may achieve and enjoy a life of possibilities. For more than 45 years, SPIN's missions and valued-led services have supported thousands of children, adults, and families to live inclusive lives in their communities. It is SPIN's culture to develop and provide services that are person-centered, family-focused, outcomes-oriented, and culturally relevant. SPIN's inclusive services incorporate current leading practices delivered by highly qualified and dedicated professionals. SPIN is guided by its four pillars: People First, Professionalism, Performance Excellence, and Productivity. Okay. Oh, that's better. SPIN Employment Services has a proven track record of assisting people with various disabilities to find and maintain community employment. Community employment is defined as employment in an integrated, community-based setting where employees earn pay at or above the minimum wage. The 140 people supported by SPIN Employment Services all have an intellectual disability. And additionally, approximately 40 also have a diagnosis of autism spectrum disorder, and another 50 have a co-occurring mental health diagnosis. 39% of people supported by SPIN Employment Services are between the ages of 21 and 31. This statistic demonstrates the success of recent efforts to increase access to services for transition-aged youth. However, there's still much needed to be done to increase opportunities for meaningful work experience while in school and secure buy-in from the local business community. I would like to share some additional statistics with you to further illustrate the impact of successful employment of people with disabilities. 96 out of 140 people supported by SPIN are currently employed, and others are actively seeking employment. And some of those 96 hold two jobs. These individuals earned a combined total income of $458,980 last year. On average, the 96 people supported by SPIN earn $8.58 per hour, $1.33 above the minimum wage, work 50 hours per month, and have been employed at the same business for four years. Each of these talented employees has shown that with the proper supports and opportunities, they can be a valuable, reliable asset to the Philadelphia business community. For most of us, a full life includes employment. It defines our passions, our values, our financial security, our relevancy. Employment gives us a reason to get up each morning and the opportunity to do work in which we can take pride. Employment is essential to full citizenship for all of us, including those with disabilities. Employment for people with disabilities has many other positive impacts. It increases self-worth, builds relationships, improves access to community resources. As full citizens, people with disabilities in the labor force have a positive financial impact on Philadelphia's economy, generating income that is ultimately returned in the form of tax revenues and the purchases of goods and services to boost the economy. Employees with disabilities are valued members of their workplaces when they're able to earn wages that are consistent with wages paid to workers without disabilities. Finding employment for anyone can be difficult, but for people with disabilities, it is daunting. The urgency of expanding current programming efforts in Philadelphia to better support transition-aged youth and adults with disabilities is conveyed in the following statistics. According to statistics released by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics in July 2013, the nationwide unemployment rate was 7.2%. For people with disabilities, the unemployment rate was 13.6% among those who were looking for work, nearly double the national average. A 2009 report, "Indicators of Labor Market Success for People with Intellectual Disabilities" by Smith &amp; Butterworth in 2009, reports a significantly higher unemployment rate for those with an intellectual disability at 72%, with the unemployment rate for those with an intellectual disability who also receive social supplemental security income at an even worse 89%. As shocking as these statistics are, these challenges are further magnified for those job seekers who are from lower-income families. The National Longitudinal Transition Study, which Danny previously mentioned, cited that in comparison to similarly skilled, higher-income youth, lower-income youth with autism spectrum disorder had a rate of disengagement after high school transition of 79% versus 45% for those higher-income youth. The National Longitudinal Transition Study defines disengagement as lacking paid employment, lacking college enrollment, and/or lacking opportunities for social participation, which could include work-based learning opportunities. Concerns for low-income families who are impacted by autism spectrum disorder and intellectual disabilities are especially high in Philadelphia, which is one of the poorest large cities in America, and has recently been identified as having the highest percentages of individuals living in deep poverty, defined as living on less than half of the federally established poverty limit. Given this data and other research regarding employment, these groups are in great need of assistance to become employed, stay employed, and become more independent and productive members of the Philadelphia community. Transition-aged students with disabilities are more successful post-graduation if they have had meaningful employment experience while still in school. Worth-based learning or internships are example of a path to success. Through these experiences, students have an opportunity to spend part of their school day working in the community. Students are encouraged encouraged to link their interests, talents, and skills into vocational themes. While school-based employment instruction is meaningful, students learn best in the real work environment outside of school. Work-based learning provides students the opportunity to get a better understanding of how the business world operates and to gain greater insight into what their personal career aspirations are. Spin has provided contracted work-based learning services to multiple Philadelphia charter schools with positive long-term outcomes for the students. Through a combination of Spin's classroom-based employment preparation curriculum, the Career Development Series, and work-based learning experiences in the community, students were better prepared for life after school. Students who participated in this program have become competitively employed or enrolled in post-secondary education, with one student receiving a full scholarship. Spin's 80 business and community partners have embraced the benefits of hiring people with disabilities. The employment of individuals with disabilities adds to the diversity of their workforce and the general enrichment of their communities. Philadelphia needs more business leaders to champion this cause and carry the message forward. One area with great potential is employment within city offices. While there are many opportunities for employment and student internships within the city of Philadelphia, the Civil Service exam and inflexible job descriptions pose a significant barrier to people with disabilities gaining employment with the city. In my professional experience, applicants have been denied the assistance of an employment specialist during the Civil Service exam, which is considered a reasonable accommodation under the ADA. To improve the employment picture for people with disabilities, it is essential that Philadelphia expand current programmatic efforts within its schools to include real work experience for students with disabilities in partnership with city offices and departments or other community partners. This begins by setting the expectation for work early and helping students to discover their unique talents and capacities. It requires that teachers are given the resources to not only connect with the business community, but the staffing to support students within the community. Far too often, students have graduated high school without adult services in place to support employment, and they have no other option but to sit at home, losing both motivation and skills that they and their teachers have worked to achieve throughout their educational career. Students who were given the opportunity to discover their employment goals through coordinated supports while still in school have succeeded in challenging themselves, reaching their outcomes, and becoming independent with the support and planning from their teachers, families, and communities. To achieve this outcome for more of Philadelphia's youth and young adults, we must do more now, together. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. We'd like to ask Kimberly Caputo to present testimony, and first identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep. Can you?
Not so well.
Okay.
Little better? All right. I'll speak up. I am Kimberly Caputo, for purposes of the record. Good morning, Chairman O'Brien, and esteemed members of the Philadelphia Committee on the Disabled and Special Needs. I thank you for providing me with an opportunity to provide you with information relating to transition services for school-aged students with disabilities in the School District of Philadelphia. I am the Deputy Chief for the School District of Philadelphia's Office of Specialized Services. The Office of Specialized Services provides program, operational, and compliance support to school teams in the 214-plus public schools that are part of the School District of Philadelphia portfolio, as well as support to the 80-plus charters within the Philadelphia geographic boundaries. Our work with respect to transition is connected to the federal and state regulations relating to the education of students with disabilities that arise from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. Teams across the Philadelphia public school system, right now, today, are supporting slightly over 19,000 students with disabilities through the delivery of an individualized education program, or an IEP. For each of the students, this IEP is individualized and is a program, educational plan, that will assist that student in reaching his or her goals in school both academically and behaviorally. With respect to transition services, there are approximately 7,500 eighth-to-twelfth graders currently in the Philadelphia public school system with disabilities. These disabilities range to include speech needs, learning disabilities, behavioral challenges, hearing and vision impairments, and of course, students with autism, which is a spectrum disorder. In that same grade band of eighth-to-twelfth grade, there are also students with more significant cognitive impairments, such as moderate to profound intellectual disability, cognitive impairments coupled with autistic features in the areas of communication, sensory challenges, and functional routines, and multiply disabled students, whose needs are reflected in a multitude of ways, including challenges with mobility, vision, communication, and activities of daily living. Having said all of that about disabilities, I think as most aptly demonstrated by the wonderful testimony from Ms. Evans and Mr. Kelly, this is not about students and their disabilities, but rather their abilities. Disability should not define an individual, and they should not limit expectations or drive a predetermined outcome for post-school endeavors. An important aspect of every student who has an IEP and their educational program is, not surprisingly, because it is the same important aspect for a non-disabled student, the area of transition. Transition has a specific meaning in the Individuals with Disability Education Act. But, for these students and their families, the legal definition aside, it means the same thing. Students with disabilities, like their non-disabled peers, want the same opportunities, whether that is to enter a four-year college, a two-year college, a vocational or trade school, or to go right into the wonderful, exciting world of employment. Some students with disabilities want to be able to navigate their community independently after their school period has ended. An IEP team, beginning at age 14, although in Philadelphia, we like to begin it in eighth grade, sits with parents and an entire team to talk about the instructional programming that will be necessary to help the student reach those goals. As I said, legally, we are required to begin that conversation at age 14, which is ninth grade. We in Philadelphia begin that conversation earlier, starting in eighth grade, because there's a very big transition for students at that time. We consider the transition to high school, a big transition, an important transition, and in the first step, in many ways, to the larger transition in life. Teams meet both in eighth grade and in later years to review and develop student-specific goals responsive to academic assessments, career interest and aptitude inventories, parent information, and student information. We can never forget the student and his or her voice in terms of what goals he or she has, and what interests he or she has, as a framework to how we, as a team, move forward. Once students reach high school, we work very hard to provide, as my colleague Andrea indicated, a host of school-based activities to help students develop the soft skills that will hold them in good stead with respect to employment. Schools across this district, high schools, have students working in school stores. They are supported in the administrative offices of our schools. They work with facilities, personnel. As a first step, in subsequent years, the School District of Philadelphia employs 13 itinerant vocational teachers. They are assigned throughout the comprehensive high schools. Their job is to liaison and connect on behalf of students on their caseload to employers within the community. Some students will go right out to work, and as you heard in previous testimony, engage with the world of work beautifully. Some students may need to further develop some preliminary skills, such as navigating the community, utilizing public transportation independently. And an itinerant vocational teacher will help them meet those goals. While in Philadelphia, many students with disabilities connect to our career and technical education opportunities. Across the district, those opportunities are designed to be open and accessible by students with disabilities. Research establishes that graduation rates are higher for those students who are engaged and enrolled in a CTE program, as opposed to their peers, whether they are disabled or non-disabled, who are not enrolled in CTE programs. Research also indicates the dropout rates for students who are enrolled in CTE programs are lower than those students who are not enrolled in CTE programs. I would also like to take this time to acknowledge the very valuable School District of Philadelphia partnerships that are working every day to advance the work experience for many of our students with disabilities. A prime example of that partnership is the School District of Philadelphia's partnership with the Marriott Bridges Foundation. Since the year 2000, the School District of Philadelphia and the Marriott Foundation for Peoples with Disabilities have worked together, also in partnership with OVR, to bring services to students with disabilities while in high school. Through this partnership, Bridges and the School District of Philadelphia have developed a unique program specific to each student's disability. Since its inception, this program has facilitated the successful transition into competitive, unsubsidized employment for over 1,200 students with disabilities. Currently, students are earning hourly wages. Right now, they are from the following high schools: West Philadelphia, Arts Academy of Benjamin Rush, South Philadelphia, Roxborough, Overbrook, Northeast High School, Lincoln High School, Martin Luther King, Furness, Frankfurt, and Fells. Each and every one of these students is a student with a disability, but this program underscores their abilities. These students are gainfully employed, making a wage right now, in a whole host of employment opportunities across this city. Places like AC Linen Supply, ARA Mark, UPS, ShopRite, the list goes on. Toys R Us, the Marriott Courtyard, Philadelphia University, Holy Family Home. Again, the list goes on, because these students have potential, and they have something to connect with, a value in our community. A second partnership that we are particularly proud of is the SEPTA Travel Accessibility Program. This is a partnership between SEPTA, the School District of Philadelphia, and the University of the Sciences. As I explained in my earlier remarks, a very first step in gainful employment is being able to navigate back and forth between your school, your home, or your place of employment. Many students with disabilities ages 14 to 17 across high school continue to have challenges with that navigational skill. And through the partnership with SEPTA, we are able to help these students develop tools to help them navigate public transportation, thus empowering them and maximizing their independence as they transition into the real world. A second, also-related partnership, is that with the SEPTA CCT Accessible Travel Center. This is right local, down the street, in suburban station. This is a tremendous resource. School teams and teachers travel every day to this center with students with disabilities. And in this safe, sensory-appropriate environment, students learn through simulated buses, rails, and subway cars to begin to safely navigate this incredibly large and very diverse city. We also embrace the Work Ready Program through the City of Philadelphia and the City of Philadelphia Future Tracks Program, where right now, five students with autism are gainfully employed and working through a six-month program that will certainly hold them in good stead. Finally, I cannot ignore our important agency partner, the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. OVR assigns a representative to School District of Philadelphia comprehensive high schools. Through the OVR representative, who serves as a liaison between school teams, the agency, and their families, a student can prepare for graduation. The representative can help identify students who may be eligible for services post-graduation, including workplace skill building, job coaching, and direct internships. In closing, I want to emphasize that we are working every day to expand existing school-based opportunities through internships, as well as partnership opportunities in the area of transition for students with disabilities. This is a harsh financial landscape, and it is very challenging. But inroads are being made each and every day, and of those inroads, we are very, very proud. I thank you for this opportunity, and particularly the hard work of Councilwoman O'Brien in championing the rights of students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And now, Kathleen, would you please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony?
Good morning. I'm Kathy Fogel from the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Chairman O'Brien and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about the Pennsylvania Office of Vocational Rehabilitation for OVR, as most know us, and how our work advances the employment and career opportunities of individuals with disabilities. Some special initiatives we are implementing, and where we see some needs, is my hope that closer collaboration with this committee and other Philadelphia stakeholders might offer opportunities for improvement and allow us to better serve people with disabilities that will lead to greater success in securing career and employment opportunities, that will lead to self-sufficiency and independence. Allow me to introduce myself again. I am Kathy Fogel, and I am the Business Services Supervisor for the Philadelphia District Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. I am here on behalf of my district administrator, Wayne Trout, who unfortunately had a schedule conflict. I have over 30 years' experience in the field of voc rehab. In addition to my master's degree, I am a licensed professional counselor and a certified rehabilitation counselor. Let me begin by giving you a brief summary of what the Pennsylvania Office of Vocational Rehabilitation is all about. First, we're a statewide program with 21 offices across Pennsylvania charged with providing counseling, training, and employment services to adults with all types of disabilities that present barriers to their ability to enter into or maintain employment. Because I know of this committee's interest in what OVR does for persons with disabilities in Philadelphia specifically, I am going to provide data and facts for our Philadelphia office only, which serves only residents of this city. We have a budget of approximately $6 million annually, and a staff of 40 master's prepared counselors, who are specifically trained to assist persons with all types of disabilities. Each year, approximately 1,700 new individuals apply for services, of which 1,500 are determined to eligible. On average, we are working with about 4,500 customers at any one time. Of that number, about 65% are individuals who have a primary disability of mental impairments, which would include individuals who have brain injury, autism, intellectual disabilities, learning disabilities, drug or alcohol impairments, or mental illness. About 20% to 25% are individuals with physical impairments, such as amputations, multiple sclerosis, multiple dystrophy, cardiac conditions, and orthopedic problems. The remainder are individuals with sensory impairments, such as deafness, hearing impairments, or blindness. Approximately 35% of our customers are transition age, which we define as individuals who are between the ages of 17 to 24, and on average, about 500 customers exit our program as successfully rehabilitated, meaning they are working in integrated employment, earning above the minimum wage, and have been on the job for at least three months. The average hourly wage is $12.46 compared to $21.40 for non-disabled individuals. It generally takes about two and a half years from the time a person applies to OVR to case closure as employed. Our success rate for individuals with disabilities who are transition age is about 41%, higher than the national average. What kind of services do we provide? We offer evaluation services, counseling, and placement as core non-cost services. Based upon individual need, we also provide restoration services, soft skills, employment training, job skill training from entry level on the job to college-level training, job coaching, home and work site modification, transportation services, and et cetera, especially those services needed to overcome barriers to getting and keeping a job. We also provide services to other major customers, the business community. Our services to employers include business services. OVR is at the national, state, and local level. But we do not work alone. We have collaborative relationships with a variety of public and private entities to improve the service delivery system. These include our partners on the Workforce Investment Board, the Career Links, the School District, the City Offices of Mental Health, substance abuse, and intellectual disability. District, the City Offices of Mental Health, Substance Abuse, and Intellectual Disabilities, to name a few. We also work with community-based organizations like Jevs, Spin, Ahead, Goodwill Industries, Elwin, Workplace Technology, The Academy, Marriott Bridges, and Pennsylvania Institute on Assistive Technology. Also, Horizon House Education Plus Program, supporting young adults with mental health diagnosis, Navigate Philadelphia Community College, and post-secondary training programs. Also, ABO Haven Incorporated Cashier and Customer Service Short-Term Program for Placement Program founded by grocers looking for a better way of doing business. We also have Philly Future Track as a collaboration with the Community Marketing Concepts and the City of Philadelphia to employ 18- to 24-year-olds who are residents of Philadelphia, have a high school diploma or GED, and are eligible to work in the United States, have the opportunity to participate in a six-month paid program consisting of five workdays, including a career readiness training. The Philly Future Trackers work on teams to clean and beautify our streets while attending regular sessions to improve job prospects for the future. Presently, OVR has five individuals with autism participating in this program. Initiatives that OVR is moving forward with include business services and Early Reach Program. OVR wants to increase employment opportunities for people with disabilities. President Obama recently signed into law the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act on July 22, 2014. The Rehabilitation Act is included in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Our business services initiatives support services that give job seekers with disabilities the opportunity to secure good jobs. Job placement and job preparation workshops are held monthly. Job-ready customers work on applications, resumes, interview skills, disclosure, and networking. Business services representatives from OVR network with employers at events via the Chamber of Commerce and job fairs to match our pipeline of talent with employer needs. The Early Reach Program assists vocational rehabilitation with providing pre-employment, transition coordination activities such as partnering with schools and local workforce development programs to support specific transition activities. Early Reach coordinators provide presentations at local schools to students and meet with parents to educate them about the services OVR offers to individuals with a disability. OVR has a Youth on the Job Training Initiative. It is a program for youth ages 16 to 25 and provides on-the-job training to support transition youth practice, work skills, obtain opportunities for real work experience, and transition from secondary to school, post-secondary education, and competitive employment. Employers can be reimbursed for a time-limited basis while they train the individual. For example, OVR can reimburse them at 90% of an hourly salary for three months, which can be reimbursed by OVR. Other opportunities in coordination with education officials include the Career Path Program at Children's Hospital, where 27 internships and placements have been in the past three years at CHOP. Also, Marriott Bridges transitions high schools youth with significant learning disabilities into competitive employment. OVR always had and continues to have a strong collaboration with the Philadelphia schools, public, parochial, and charter schools. We have liaison counselors assigned to work at many of the schools to make students and parents aware of the services OVR offers to individuals with a disability. However, as with any program, there are areas that we need to improve upon, such as getting more employers to become aware of the talent pool of persons with disabilities. We need businesses willing to provide volunteer experience, job shadowing, mentoring, internships, and paid on-the-job experience opportunities. Many youth have this opportunity, but the real need is to provide individuals with a disability these opportunities, to have a real part-time or full-time work. More exposure to the world of work will assist with developing the skills required for real work. Another area to improve upon, a program specifically directed to reentry services for young adults with disabilities who are re-entering the workforce with a juvenile delinquent background. As stated previously, the Youth on the Job Training Initiative is an avenue for businesses to provide this opportunity for real work experience for this group. OVR continues to work in collaboration with the Philadelphia School District, Bureau of Autism, City of Philadelphia, Office of Developmental Disabilities, the Department of Mental Health, and various other agencies. No one has a lot of money, and working collaboratively addresses resources needed. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you with employment needs of individuals with a disability.
Thank you very much. I would just like to reiterate, Kim, you have 19,000 IEPs. That's just absolutely overwhelming. And dealing with that, with the underfunding situation that is well-known to all of us. And Kathleen, you're charged with a significant amount of responsibility in terms of the volume of individuals you're working with at a given time and the diversity of the needs of those individuals. So I congratulate you for what you're doing. Andrea, I think you've pointed out the challenges of the civil service system, but I think they're even more significant than what you're alluding to in various departments that are specific to autism. The job descriptions that individuals living with autism apply for, those job descriptions will not allow them to assume those positions. They don't define the supports that are necessary to be successful. And I really believe that there has to be a real far-reaching review of the entire civil service system and the definitions of those jobs so that our individuals can be more appropriately considered for opportunities. And that may mean writing more expansive definitions and incorporating into some of those definitions some of the support. So I'll just ask you, is there anything that you would like to add after you heard your colleagues testify? Or if there's something that you'd like to shout out to the bigger employment world, employers, that if you had something you wanted to say to them? Don't be afraid of this, but listen to us, and this is why we're successful, and this is what we want you to know about what we're doing.
Yeah, I would say the largest barrier is just the belief that everyone with a disability can work. Too often, we hear, "Yeah, you know, people with disabilities can work, but not my child," or "not me myself." And helping people to understand that there are so many resources, assistive technologies out there, agencies, funding systems, that can help them achieve their goals. And so, helping people believe in themselves, sharing success stories so that people with disabilities, their family, and the business community can see that this works, and it's been very successful, I think is the largest thing. And for employers to realize that this isn't a burden. I think a lot of people want to do the right thing as a business owner and help their community, but they don't know how, and it seems really overwhelming to them. And so, I think the more stories we can share from employer perspectives as well, to help other employers feel more comfortable about it, would be beneficial.
I just think the idea of profiling individuals with their strengths and their interests, and then looking at individual employers with their intermediate entry-level positions and matching those two is a great facilitation. Cindy, do you have anything?
Again, thank you for your service and for what you're, the service and the commitment that you're really providing. And, you know, all we hear nowadays is "cut, cut, cut." You know, "There's no funding for this, there's no funding for that." And it's good to hear that there's a lot of collaboration with other providers to make sure that, you know, the needs are met. So I just wanted to really thank you for thinking outside the box as a result of necessity. But if you have anything that you want to add there in terms of other partners that you're working with, and, you know, how do these, you know, how does this all flow? I know that if there was, you know, more funding, then obviously, it would be a whole lot better. But in light of the situation and, you know, the budgets that we have to deal with now, could you just really briefly give us some idea of, you know, how do you work collaboratively? What does that look like?
Thank you. It's a great question, and it is absolutely born of necessity. Collaboration looks very individualized. The parent, at least at a school level, is a pivotal part of that collaboration. We at the School District will make known external, community-based resources, either through resource directories or by sharing information. Sometimes, those resources are actually co-located in schools, which is wonderful. It gives the parent an opportunity to actually meet someone as opposed to looking at a resource directory.
Do you provide those resource directories to elected officials in other offices? I'm just wondering if it's something that we could have access to, as we have, you know, a lot of need, and, you know, that comes through our offices, and it would be great if we could also refer appropriately.
It's an excellent, excellent idea. We work very hard to load a tremendous amount of information, anything that the Office of Specialized Services disseminates out to schools. And we work with Elwin and OVR. People inundate us with directories and training sessions. We will send that out through conduits into a school, but we will also load it onto our website so that it is accessible by parents. I will absolutely ensure that information is communicated back into city council, because I know you do receive constituents. And everyone sending the same message and getting the information out, I think, would be a tremendous, tremendous benefit to families.
I think so.
They are not alone. They should never feel isolated, for as many challenges the School District feels, as well as our partners, as well as the city itself. It is a rich city. There are a lot of people working very, very hard and thinking very creatively about how to address needs when every dollar is just so very, very precious.
And that's important for someone like myself. If someone, you know, just walked up today and said, "You know, my child has X, Y, and Z issues," you know, I would really have to think and to go back and to try to figure out, you know, okay, where do I even begin? Because there's, you know, we are rich in resources, but having it at our fingertips would be really helpful. So, you know, for members of city council and for, you know, for the state legislature and, you know, members of Congress and the US Senate, and, you know, just every office should really have, you know, some sort of information, and maybe even a training. If you all, I don't know if you all offer that, but maybe a training for our legislative offices so that we can, again, we can get the information out.
I would just, hopefully, in closing, say that from my point of view, and I know from teachers' point of views and from parents' point of views, it's about ability. It is about, label aside, challenge aside, because we all have challenges. Every single one of us has figured out how to navigate, given the challenges that we experience. And that's the same for a student or an adult with a disability. When looking upon these individuals, it is about their abilities and what they bring to the table. Creatively thinking about internships and mentorships and apprenticeships, whether they are paid or unpaid, particularly for school-age kids, can make a huge, huge difference.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to share that OVR has a new program, the Early Reach Coordinator, that goes out to the schools of Philadelphia and works with students 14 through 16 to work with the student and the parents to let them, students with disabilities, to let them know what services OVR provides and their resources that they may need. Not just the liaison counselor that they work with when they're, you know, 17 and ready to graduate, or 18 and ready to graduate. And this is a free-cost service that we provide.
Very good.
Yeah. And also, the on-the-job training program will provide employers the opportunity to hire a student, maybe for the summer. It's at 90%, they get reimbursed an hourly salary, hourly wage, but they don't have to, then they can go back to school. This is an opportunity for businesses to hire a student for the summer or after school, and the student gets an opportunity to get some soft skills, real work experience, and hopefully, what I would like to do is be able to reach out to more employers. And how this opportunity here can provide that, I'm not really sure. I know we're providing testimony for, about students with disabilities, but if there's any way that we can, you know, through council...
That would be great.
Find out what kind of work you folks would maybe open up to for our students.
Well, we would, you know, I'd like to work with the chairman here to try to figure out what employers are, you know, that are doing healthy business with the city of Philadelphia that we could lean on and encourage, you know, strongly encourage to, you know, really think about, you know, what is their policy? Do they have a policy? And how, you know, how is that connecting with the work that you all are doing? Is it connecting at all? I don't know. I don't know how many of the, you know, the big companies here in Philadelphia that are operating and are doing very well. I could call out a few by name, but I'm not going to, just because I don't know what their policy is. But, you know, I think this is a time to have them not only share their policy, but to promote it, you know? This is a wonderful thing. Let's talk about it. Let's promote the great things that we're doing. So, but thank you.
I just have one more thing to add, which I completely forgot. I'm part of the Philadelphia Transition Coordinating Council. So it is a grassroots effort that started up last year, and it is people from various agencies, so provider agencies like myself, people from the School District of Philadelphia, and people from OVR, as well as people with disabilities, business partners. We're just kind of looking to get everyone to the table to talk about how can we practically solve the issue, you know, stop talking about, well, this is a barrier, and that's a barrier, get down to how can we collaborate and best work together. So if anyone is interested in that, it's transitioncouncil.org.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to bring up the third panel. We'd like to bring up Julie Foster, who's an attorney with Public Interest Law Center of Philadelphia, Charles Horton Jr., the Executive Director for Accessibility Compliance Specialist, Mayor's Commission on People with Disabilities, Tracy Katz, the Coordinator of Business Development Networks for Training and Development, Chair, Employer Relations Work Group, Employment First, and Mark Salzer, who's a professor and chair of the Department of Rehabilitation Services or Sciences at Temple University. He's the Director of Temple University Collaborative and Community Inclusion. I would like to give Julie Foster an opportunity to present testimony. I know that you have to be in court, so what I will do is just go a little out of order, ask you to present your testimony, and then we'll provide questions for you, and then hear the testimony from the other members of the panel. I do have one question, and I'll load it up front, Julie, if that's okay. I'd like to know your thoughts on how you can provide input into the Pennsylvania State Plan in response to the CMS mandate of integrated employment, given that the plan currently fails to mention supported employment as a strategy. So with that, Julie, would you please identify yourself and present your testimony?
My name is Julie Foster. I'm an Independence Fellow at the Public Interest Law Center of Philadelphia.
Could you please pull the microphone as close as you can?
I'm the Independence Fellow at the Public Interest Law Center of Philadelphia, and thank you very much for taking up this important issue of employment for Philadelphians with disabilities. To answer your question regarding the CMS, actually, Pennsylvania put out a revised transition plan, and the comment period is through the end of March. So there is an opportunity for everybody to review the, it's the Home and Community-Based Waiver that is provided to Medicaid funding that the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services have mandated those services are provided in integrated settings. And each state is required to submit a plan on how they're going to transition their services to become compliant with that rule. So Pennsylvania has just issued a revised version of its plan. This is the third revision now, and those comments are open to the public and available to first submission. What I wanted to talk about today, well, in part, as by way of introduction, the Public Interest Law Center of Philadelphia has long represented individuals with all kinds of disabilities, including visual, intellectual, deafness, and physical. My project is to represent and advise low-income individuals and employment discrimination matters. I have flyers if anybody is in need of disability-based employment discrimination services. They are free. The Law Center has been importantly involved in cases in representing individuals with intellectual disabilities and autism to move out of institutions and into the community through the closure of institutions such as Pennhurst and Embryville. The Supreme Court Olmsted decision was built around many of the cases that we had tried. With that experience in mind, we are greatly concerned about the needs for individuals with disabilities to have meaningful employment and real access to the community. As Chairman mentioned, only 22% of individuals with disabilities in Philadelphia are employed. Employment is essential for people with disabilities, as for all Philadelphians to escape poverty. Employment is essential for people with disabilities, as for all Philadelphians to escape poverty. It is particularly important for people with disabilities. It's a key tool to gain independence, dignity, and to fully participate as a member of the community. One major barrier to employment for people with intellectual disabilities and autism are challenges in accessing employment services. The first challenge is obtaining funding for services, which are principally provided through the Medicaid waiver system. Currently, there are more than 14,000 people on the waitlist for the Medicaid Person-Family Directed Support Waiver. Second, once you get on a waiver, most individuals end up in sheltered workshops or adult day programs where adults with intellectual, developmental, and other disabilities spend their day segregated in workshops that are laboring for below minimum wage and have no interaction with non-disabled peers, or very little. Such segregated settings violate the Supreme Court's interpretation of Title II of the ADA in Olmsted. The court held that segregation constitutes discrimination, and the ADA mandates provision of services in integrated settings where appropriate. Yet 85 to 90 percent of vocational services in Pennsylvania are provided in segregated settings. The most recent state-sponsored survey, the Independent Monitoring for Quality Report, found that only 8 percent of respondents were employed in an integrated setting. Last January, as we noted, Senator CMS issued its regulation, and Pennsylvania's transition plan currently does not articulate any specific goals in increasing supported employment services in the community. Philadelphia can lead the state in implementing an Employment First policy. Can you do this? We direct, train, and support the Medicare waiver county service coordinators for the people who are actually connecting individuals with these services and have them prioritize employment services for individuals receiving these waivers. Replace the default of dependency and segregation and create a presumption in favor of competitive employment for all. A second major reason Philadelphians with disabilities are excluded from the workplace is employment discrimination. The ADA and the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act prohibit employers from making employment decisions based on disability and mandate employers provide reasonable accommodations for otherwise qualified individuals with disabilities. Successfully implementing reasonable accommodations requires a proactive engagement on part of both the employer and the employee. In some instances, employees do not clearly communicate their need for an accommodation, don't understand the rights to an accommodation, or fear retaliation. For example, I had one client come to me after she was fired for tardiness because she didn't know how to request an accommodation. Similarly, employers do not always understand their obligations or know about resources for accommodations in the workplace. Many of the cases they see could have been remedied ex ante by better communications, understanding of obligations, and access to resources. Often workplaces are not accessible because an employer has not considered whether particular software or equipment is ADA compliant when acquiring it. In fact, a common employment barrier is for people with visual impairments is the inaccessibility of online job applications. As most of our work, lives, and commerce become digital, technological accessibility is paramount. What can we do about this? Well, city council can take action to communicate resources and to mandate that all Philadelphia businesses are accessible. City council can help centralize and communicate information on disability resources, as Councilman O'Brien suggested. Philadelphia already has a webpage dedicated to disability issues, but it's focused on city services. This information hub could be expanded to provide information on disability employment services in Philadelphia, including how to access benefits while working. Council members can also communicate these resources to citizens through your city block captain communications, local chambers of commerce, and the next-door neighborhood site that a number of city agencies are using to communicate with our citizens. Finally, city council has a legislative opportunity to increase employment opportunities by addressing exclusion in Philadelphia businesses and organizations. First, council can mandate businesses operating in Philadelphia comply with web accessibility guidelines provided under Section 508 of the Rehabilitation Act. Too many individuals with visual impairments are excluded from the major daily activities of work, socialization, and commerce by inaccessible websites. Second, city council can adopt and implement an Employment First policy and commit to increasing the number of Philadelphians with intellectual disabilities and autism in competitive employment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cindy, do you have any questions?
I do. Well, you know, I think that's very good suggestions, and I think that that should be something that we should talk to about, you know, the timing is everything. And so as we look to have a new mayor, that that should be something that should be on the agenda is a commitment, that there should be, you know, an increase in reaching out to the disabled community and making sure that we increase our numbers here in the city of Philadelphia. So I think that's an excellent idea.
And we'll look at your legislative recommendations and we will approach our colleagues for supporting, for support in drafting and implementing those legislative ideas.
Thank you.
And thank you and good luck with your.
Can I add one other thing also? Is that, you know, just in terms of having access to the information and, you know, knowing what services are out there, even on the city side. I had a community hearing probably, maybe almost a year ago, and I had a meeting in my community in Germantown, and we had a young man who was in the front who had a seizure all of a sudden during the middle of the meeting. And as traumatic as that was, not just for him, but for those who were around us, it became even more disconcerting because he actually was unable to speak and was deaf, and we didn't have the proper resources there. And so making sure that those resources are available when we have our, you know, public functions, you know, are out and about, I think is just critical. So, again, I wanted to thank her for her comments. I think they were very important.
Thank you. And now, I would ask Charles Horton Jr. to please state your name for the record and you begin your testimony.
Good morning.
Good morning. I don't know, can?
All right. Good morning, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman Bass.
Do you want to hold it in your hand?
I'll link for it.
Is this better?
That's better.
I'm Charles Horton. I'm the executive director for the Mayor's Commission on People with Disabilities for the city of Philadelphia. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak about Resolution 150027, which authorized city hearings regarding state of educational opportunities and career development for people with disabilities. These are topics that are very dear to me and the community I serve. Our office knows how important education is to our community and is the true gateway to independence. Therefore, MCPD made education one of the main topics and directions of the commission. The main directions and topics focus on education, employment, housing, and transportation. MCPD believes that our community, as our community gains higher levels of education, we will become more employable. Education leads to more opportunities to obtain jobs that will yield us life-sustainable careers and the same quality of life as individuals without disabilities. In turn, educational attainment gives us the availability to purchase and build accessible homes to live, raise, and grow our families. And in addition, education gives us the availability and finances to purchase vehicles and use any form of accessible transportation available to us to live our lives daily. It is the responsibility of, it is the responsibility of our community to serve, support, and help elevate one another. As such, the Mayor's Commission on People with Disabilities offers to Oliver H. M. Jordan Scholarship for Students with Disabilities. We have given over $100,000 in $1,000,000 and $1,500,000 awards to over 90 students in the last 20 years, and $30,000 in the last three years alone. Oliver H. M. Jordan was the former executive director for the Mayor's Commission on People with Disabilities and was the inspiration role model and steadfast advocate for people with disabilities. We positively named this scholarship in honor to carry on his legacy and his work to bring the community of people with disabilities to a higher level of independence. We have encouraged local colleges and universities to give more support and direction to students with disabilities to pursue fields of study to give them more opportunities to become gainfully employed. We have advocated for more accessible housing on and off campus for students with various disabilities. For the last nine years, MCPD has been fully staffed by individuals with disabilities. We have supported, mentored numerous students with disabilities and/or have family members living with disabilities. These students are active high school and college students pursuing their degrees, graduates, and/or are employed. We have honored businesses and supervisors who have gone above and beyond to employ and support employees and employers with our Access Achievements Awards at our annual award ceremony. The Access Achievements Awards offers outstanding candidates such as private businesses, public agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals who have made valiant efforts to improve and increase accessibility by successfully removing physical and attitude barriers for people with disabilities in Philadelphia. The Mayor's Commission on People with Disabilities encourages our community to apply for city jobs because we are equal opportunity employer and we have parameters in place to accommodate, starting with, to accommodate, with accommodations starting with testing as for potential city employees and accommodations for existing employees. Furthermore, the city has departmental aid training position. Departmental aid training is a position for persons who have been characterized as having a physical or mental disability as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act and has been referred to the EEO of the Personnel Department or by organizations such as the Pennsylvania Office of Vocational Rehabilitation or the Office of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disabilities to work either full-time or part-time in city departments and jobs that match their skills and purposes. These types of work include, but not limited to, data entry, messenger, basic clerical, miscellaneous office, and manual duties. The departmental aid training receives on-the-job training with appointed city departments with the aid of job coaches from the referring agencies with the goal of becoming a civil service appointed to the departmental aid. The maximum period for employment in this title is not to exceed one year. The maximum number of encumbered employees in this title citywide at one time is not to exceed 15. The departmental aid training position is solely requested and funded by employees' department, and at this time, we have 13 employees working as departmental aides. In closing, this year, we will celebrate the 20th anniversary of the ADA. I know the community of people with disabilities did not fight alone to make change in the world to create inclusion. As we are, as we, the community, join together with advocates, individuals without disabilities, and our legislator, therefore, we must continue to work together to remove myths and stereotypes long inflicted on our community, with make determined efforts to become educated, to educate ourselves academically, professionally, and personally, because we are capable of being educated and maintaining life-sustaining employment if given the opportunity. I thank you for this time and this opportunity. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Charles. Tracy, would you please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony?
Good morning, Councilman O'Brien and committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today. My name's Tracy Katz. I am with Networks for Training and Development, and I'm here also to represent the Philadelphia Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services, DBHIDS, as a member of the IDS Employment First Philadelphia Steering Committee. As part of that committee, I chair the Employer Relations Work Group. Jody mentioned Employment First earlier. Julie, sorry. Julie mentioned Employment First earlier, and I do think it is something that, you know, should carry further conversation. Employment First is an initiative of National APSI, which is the Association of People Supporting Employment First. The association states that employment is the, in the general workforce at minimum wage or higher is the first and preferred outcome in the provision of publicly funded services for all working-age citizens with disabilities, regardless of their level of disability. Philadelphia IDS has been at the forefront of the effort to increase community-integrated supported employment for individuals with intellectual disabilities for over 20 years now. The Employment First Philadelphia Initiative is our most recent effort and was implemented in 2010. As part of the Employment First Philadelphia Steering Committee, I've chaired the Employer Relations Work Group for the last three years. The work group is dedicated to increasing employer awareness, education, and participation in the hiring of individuals with disabilities. We've hosted employer trainings. You actually stopped in on one a while ago. Community awareness event in Love Park, Take Your Legislator to Work visits with individuals working in the Philadelphia and surrounding counties. Every legislator in the state actually has been invited to a visit, including council members. So if you'd like to make a workplace visit, let me know. And in regards to your question about dissemination of materials, Senator Kitchen, after her visit, actually met with myself and some people from IDS and providers to get materials to have available. So it's out there, and more people that want it, the more we can give out. Last week, we convened the first business-to-business focus group where 24 employers came together to engage in discussion on strategies to increase awareness and engagement of the greater Philadelphia business community to expand employment opportunities for people with disabilities. The biggest piece of information that I gathered in this process is that employers want to be involved in hiring. They just have many misconceptions about the diverse skills that are available to them and the process by which they can source talent. Employers are surprised to learn that hiring individuals with disabilities does not increase liability or absenteeism. Rather, studies have shown that workers with disabilities often demonstrate lower absenteeism and job turnover, thus creating the business bottom line through increased return on hiring and onboarding investments, just as you suggested. In addition, the employers were interested in knowing more about how supported employment professionals can help by matching the skills of individuals with disabilities with the unmet needs of their businesses. There's a need for more conversation, networking, and information sharing between employers so that those leaders in disability employment, such as Wells Fargo, with their diverse abilities program, a host of the focus group, can dispel those myths amongst other employers and share the strategies that have helped them develop a strong disability hiring practice. This group, the focus group, joined by many other businesses, will continue its work and conversations at the National APSI Employer Leadership Forum, which is part of the National APSI Conference, being held here in Philadelphia in June. SAP is on tap to be on one of the panels. The forum is being co-organized by the President of Pennsylvania APSI, Julia Barroll, and Ed Rogers, the District Director of the US Department of Labor Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs. And I invite you guys to attend that forum as well.
Congratulations for getting all the A.
I know, it's a lot of words. The city of Philadelphia has a diverse population, and disability is a piece of the life circumstance of many of the residents. Employment not only increases financial stability, but also self-esteem and confidence, which in turn increases involvement in the community in general. There are models of excellence throughout the country, and looking at the efforts of the city of Seattle is a good place to begin. In 2012, the Seattle City Council passed an ordinance authorizing an additional 50 positions dedicated within the city departments to use when hiring a person with a developmental disability. I should mention that those jobs, because you mentioned that sometimes jobs, requirements and descriptions don't leave people out, those positions actually have no job description and no requirements. They are 50 positions that are dedicated to be filled as needed. In addition, they added a full-time in Seattle paid position for a job developer or job coach to work with the city employers to identify and place individuals into these 50 positions. As a result, the city of Seattle's been contacted by other private and public sector employers to learn how to replicate their model. Sure, they'd love to talk with you. In June of 2014, when they were recognized as an employer awardee at the National APSI Conference in California, they reported that the initiative had added more dedicated openings and they had realized their 85th job placement within the city departments. Also, another role model for hiring is the federal government. President Obama put on his agenda a few years ago that he wanted to increase the percentage of hiring through the federal government to 10 percent of people, every, of, 10 percent of hiring should be people with disabilities, and they have actually reached that goal as of 2012. In addition to the Employer Relations Work Group, the Employment First Initiative has work groups on capacity building, supports coordination, systems and policy, data, and transition, and each of those groups have made similar contributions to the efforts. Through the Employment First Philadelphia Initiative, IDS funded the development of a data system that provides a myriad of information about individuals who are working competitively within their communities. I worked with that data system and immediately recognized Andrea from SPINS data, and it did come from Employee Stat. I verified that. So all of the hourly wage and number of hours and people employed, that all came from this. this data system out of this initiative. This data system is now being looked at by the Pennsylvania Office of Developmental Programs as a possible way to track employment data across disabilities statewide. So, in your comments, you might want to suggest that they make sure they have a data system to be able to track progress, if you make comments to the CMS. Projects working with support coordinator organizations and with local employment providers, such as our statewide employment symposium and supports coordination training, have strengthened the commitment and increased knowledge and capacity to creatively support employment on the provider side of service delivery. I might also mention that APSI has a certification for which service providers can sit and become certified. It's after my name, it's called Certified Employment Support Professional. In November, we tested and thirty people of the thirty that took it passed that. They are the first thirty, aside from three others of us, who are now certified support professional, employment support professionals in the state of Pennsylvania. Andrea passed and she now has those letters after her name as well. Through the initiative, an annual mini-grant has been awarded to several providers to increase employment as well. This year, in compliant, you know, in looking at kind of the field and what's going on, Networks for Training and Development will be working with a provider to transition from self-sheltered employment to more community-based employment opportunities for the individuals for whom they serve. In conclusion, we know that employment is a key to building stronger and healthier communities. Access to real jobs with real rate wages is essential if citizens with disabilities are to have meaningful everyday lives and to be free from poverty, dependence and isolation. I believe that the efforts of DBHIDS Employment First Philadelphia Initiative are a strong start. We hope that you carry that torch and work with us to continue that. We're very mu- we very much appreciate your interest and support in this endeavor. Thank you for your time, your attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure Tracy has as many nice things to say about you as you have, I mean, Andrea has as many nice things to say about you. And now, we would like to ask Dr. Mark Salzer to please identify herself and proceed with your testimony.
Great. Chairman O'Brien and Councilwoman Bass, my name is Mark Salzer and I am professor and chair of the Department of Rehabilitation Sciences at Temple University. I'm also a psychologist and direct a center funded by the National Institute on Disability, Independent Living and Rehabilitation Research.
And thank you for Katie Kaplan.
Yep, and thank you for recognizing her terrific skills as well. Center on Community Inclusion of Adults with Psychiatric Disabilities. Approximately five percent of Americans have a serious mental illness, including schizophrenia, bipolar disorder and major recurring depression. These individuals experience lower educational attainment than the general population, which ultimately affects their career trajectories and partially explains why only fifteen percent are employed at any point in time and why an overwhelmingly majority live in poverty that leads to homelessness and involvement in the criminal justice system. There are many misconceptions about the career, interests and abilities of people with psychiatric disabilities and whether work is beneficial for them. The data clearly shows that people with psychiatric disabilities would, could and should work. It is the same for other disability groups. Getting this message out would be my first recommendation for the committee. People with disabilities are affected by the same labor market factors as everyone else. These include labor supply factors, such as their skills, knowledge and backgrounds, and labor demand factors, which refers to the desire among employers to hire employees who experience disabilities. College and vocation-specific post-secondary education imparts critical skills in our fast-moving labor market. As mentioned earlier, people with psychiatric disabilities experience challenges in this area. Efforts to enhance educational attainment include better supporting transitions from secondary to post-secondary educational settings for young people with emotional and behavioral disorders. This would include assistance with obtaining financial aid, obtaining basic study and time management skills, and getting connected to campus resources prior to employment or enrollment. Enhanced supports are then needed once they are in college, including supported education programs like Education Plus, a program offered by Horizon House that we heard from earlier today, which uses emerging best practices that are showing great promise in increasing educational outcomes for college students with psychiatric disabilities. Moreover, encouraging colleges and universities to do a better job addressing the needs of students with disabilities beyond the minimum required by Section 504 of the ADA would also lead to enhanced academic success. For example, Drexel University has an autism support program that provides peer support aimed at enhancing academic, social and advocacy success for their students. Finally, colleges and universities could be encouraged to adopt formal policies where they explicitly state that students with disabilities are welcomed on their campuses and clearly outlining steps for how they will support them. The reason for this is, in my work with students with psychiatric disabilities, I hear countless stories of students being discriminated against on college campuses with very little support for them. Our center has created a model policy statement as it pertains to students with psychiatric disabilities. All of us have heard about jobs and obtain jobs because of people we know. People with psychiatric disabilities have limited social networks that are typically dominated by individuals who are unemployed. Our center is conducting research to assist religious congregations, recreational centers, civic groups and housing developments to be more welcoming and inclusive of individuals with disabilities. This will result in enriched social networks that can, among other things, lead to jobs. Other strategies for enhancing the skills of people with disabilities, as well as their social networks, include increasing internship opportunities that also boost their resumes and employment prospects. Furthermore, internships expose employers to the abilities of these individuals, creating more demand for their labor. Connections to employers who participate in city-funded or organized job fairs could be expanded by requiring these events to have a special emphasis on hiring people with disabilities and ensuring that they are widely publicized to groups and organizations serving people with disabilities. Public and private employers should be at the forefront of promoting economics' self-sufficiency for individuals with disabilities and building demand for their labor. Entities like chambers of commerce and Union League members could develop partnerships with the disability community to increase targeted employment opportunities. One caution regarding this approach, however, is to make sure that job development for people with disabilities focuses on the full range of the labor market. All jobs are honorable, but it is too often the case that people with disabilities are steered to entry-level, low-wage, poor-benefit jobs that do not maximize their capabilities. Tax incentives and other policies could also be used to build demand for employment to people with disabilities. Finally, research has shown that people with psychiatric disabilities and those with other disabilities face discrimination in the labor market. Directives aimed at hiring people with disabilities across the whole range of city jobs and building on the city's broader nondiscrimination and employment initiatives as it affects all contractors could ensure that people with mental health conditions and other impairments do not face discrimination in seeking jobs with businesses and agencies that have contracts with the city. To maintain longstanding focused attention on this critical issue, an advisory board could be established that is led by consumers and families, with administrative support and responsibility provided by the Department of Behavioral Health, and that also consists of mental health provider agencies, city and private employers, and both the city's workforce development agencies and the non-mental health training entities that abound in the city. The charge to this board would be to promote broader services and supports for those with mental health conditions who want to work, that achieve employment results. An annual report to city council could be required in which credible data on the employment of people with psychiatric disabilities would be provided, along with strategies that have been implemented that move the system forward and toward full employment. Work has tremendous health, economic and social benefits to individuals with psychiatric disabilities. Adopting these types of strategies are critical for ensuring that we do not lose another generation of individuals with psychiatric disabilities and other disabilities to a lifetime of frustrated idleness, despair and poverty. In closing, I would like to thank this committee and especially Chairman O'Brien for bringing substantial attention to numerous issues facing individuals who experience disabilities and for the committee's leadership in pursuing solutions to ensuring that people with disabilities have the opportunities to live satisfying, fulfilling and meaningful lives in the community like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Doctor, I would, I like your suggestion of the advisory board and the annual report for behavioral health. Do you have any suggestions on how to create something of this nature for all disability groups? Or would your recommendation be to create a citywide board to address all the stakeholder groups in one group or would you create boards by disability type?
Yeah, you know.
It's a broad question, I'm just trying to think how you could.
Yeah, creating one board would be, would be great. The issue is, within the mental health system, we have a lot of concerns that mental health providers and policymakers aren't focused enough on employment of people with psychiatric disabilities, so having a real targeted initiative in that area would be very important, but there certainly could be a cross-disability group that does the same thing and that really drills down with data from every, you know, disability area. So, certainly a broad cross-disability committee could be established.
I know somebody who will follow up with you on that. And Tracy, I'm very interested in the Seattle project. Would you be able to interpret that for us on how we could best apply those principles here?
I, you know, I, I know about it because they spoke at National APSI last year. Basically, and I think that I sent Katie the two thousand and twelve report.
Yeah, I have it here.
Yeah, so that describes it a little bit more. You know, I think because so many people get discouraged and don't apply for positions because of requirements and, and job descriptions, creating positions that can be filled as needed and then hiring someone to work within the city to kind of identify where there are needs in the departments and kind of creating almost customized positions and then filling those with people that can do those jobs. It not only helps the city departments become more efficient, it, you know, provides employment for someone. So, I think that was the key to, they emphasized that that was one of the keys to their program was that it was, it was an approved job position, but it didn't have a description. It just kind of sat there until the, till the job coach, job developer identified a part of the city that, you know, departments that wanted to hire someone. And then it became a little more fleshed out what, what, what it would look like. Is that helpful?
Oh, yeah. I think all of you have given us wonderful recommendations on how we can follow through legislatively and, and Charles, your scholarship program, we've witnessed that when we come over to your annual luncheon. And the strategies on how to employ individuals as department aides, does that come from their individual budgets or how do you, how can we?
Well, the departmental aid.
Further that further.
Could you?
Yeah.
Well, the departmental aid training program, it comes from the individual budgets and it also comes from the department itself needing someone to fill those different types of positions. And there are fifteen departmental aid training in that program, you can have fifteen a year, but you don't have, the departments, the first, individuals don't have the state in that for the whole year to be appointed to the departmental aid. Then you can, we can have as many people as we want in that departmental aid in the, in the city at any time, there's no specific numbers. So, within that program, we have fifteen, but we can always expand it.
Thank you for the support of Cindy Councilman.
Yes. I just had a couple of comments, Charles, you know, I see Charles everywhere. He's at concerts and he's downtown. I see him, I'm not even kidding, I see him everywhere I go. So, but it's always good to see you. But I did have a couple of questions for Mr. Salazar, Dr. Salazar. And one of the comments that you made was about making recreation centers more welcoming and as the Chair of Parks and Recreation, I'm very interested to see if you had any specific thoughts on that. One of the things that I have done as the Chair is for every par, or for every recreation center and playground in my district, which is the eighth district, that we've touched, we've made sure it includes things that are for the disabled community. And I remember going out to the northeast to, for ribbon cutting for a playground that was done in Councilman O'Neill's district and it was, you know, it had a lot of features that were designed for children with autism and other, you know, developmental delays and also for children who had physical disabilities who might not be able to get on a traditional playground swing and all those sorts of things. And so, you know, as we were talking about it, we realized that the cost for those items really was not significant in terms of, you know, being above the cost of other playground equipment for children. And so, one of the things that we've done in my district is every playground and recreation center that we've touched, we've added those elements automatically. And so, you know, we make sure that there are different, you know, colors and textures and things that would resonate for children who have those particular delays. But if there are other things that you think that we should be doing to make them more welcoming, I'm, I'm very curious as to what you think, you know, what your thoughts are.
Right, so thank you very much. And actually, the city of Philadelphia has done a great job with making recreational facilities really accessible.
Yes.
For many people with disabilities. Our center's concerns are primarily focused on adults with psychiatric disabilities and there's tremendous discrimination towards adults with psychiatric disabilities, schizophrenia and bipolar disorder in particular. One thing that we've been doing with recreation centers, community centers, also gyms, those kinds of things, is try to help them become more welcoming, accepting of people with psychiatric disabilities, trying to put them in contact with our mental health centers, help them create more opportunities for people with psychiatric disabilities to feel more welcomed at the center. Not necessarily special events, but making sure that they have activities that are appropriate for them, that there are the appropriate supports and communications with the mental health centers. Our concerns are, we are hearing from some people who say that they don't feel welcomed at these places and that's, those are some of the things that we're trying to do to, to address those issues.
Okay. Very good, thank you. That's something that we can definitely look into in terms of, you know, working with the Department of Parks and Recreation to find out how we can make sure that our rec center leaders are in tune with this need and are properly addressing it, so that's something that we can certainly do. And also, one other quick question, you mentioned that some universities locally here have gone above and beyond when it comes to, you know, making those with autism and other delays feel welcome and ensuring success. And can you point out briefly who's doing what? We can deduct who's not doing what from that all.
I wish I could give lots of examples, really, Drexel has been wonderful in the area of autism.
Drexel.
Temple, maybe? Temple has a great office of students with disabilities, Disability Resource Services, but I would say, and the head of that group is terrific and doing the best he can, there could certainly be more resources that Temple makes available and other universities make available to support students with disabilities, especially promoting peer support, promoting opportunities to encourage students with psychiatric disabilities. Students with psychiatric disabilities are the largest disability group in colleges and universities and they're also the one group that these offices of students with disabilities constantly say that they struggle with trying to figure out how to support them. Most of the accommodations that they're familiar with are appropriate for people with physical, sensory disabilities. They're starting to come around a little bit with students with, with developmental disabilities in particular. They constantly struggle for supporting students with psychiatric disabilities.
Well, you know, just a thought is that, well, a couple of thoughts. The first is that it might be helpful if we gave them some guidance. You know, maybe we should develop a, a list of suggested things that our universities could do and, you know, they can determine how long it will take them to implement, you know, the different measures, but I think rather than waiting on them, maybe we should, you know, gently suggest what they can do that would be helpful immediately. what they can do that would be helpful immediately, and what they could plan for longer term. So maybe that's something that we could, you know, put together.
If we're women best, I would, we would be thrilled to be there and, and support that work and do whatever we can-
That'd be great.
...in the critical area.
And, and the other thing in terms of, you know, the psychiatric disabilities is, you know, one of the things that strikes me is that you often hear about, you know, someone who has schizophrenia, and something that just, you know, resonates in my mind is that I've heard over and over that, you know, well, you know, Susan went off to, you know, Temple, and she was there for a couple of semesters, and when she came back, she was different. And so we know that it usually strikes, I believe, in like, sort of like your later teen years, which is, you know, your college years. And so for universities to, you know, find a way to, to pay attention to those kinds of things, and to, you know, to take more of a proactive approach to, you know, something's going on with, with the student, not this, oh, they're just college students, and they're all over 18, so they're all on their own, but really paying attention so that if there's something that, you know, if there are warning signs that are there, that the universities could step in and maybe get early treatment, which would be, you know, helpful, and also, you know, with the diagnosis and reaching out to the parents and saying, hey, you know, maybe we think, you know, something's up here. And there may be privacy laws, I understand, that might, you know, interfere, but there has to be a way for the universities to be more proactive when it comes to those sorts of things, when we know what happens at 18, 19, 20.
Right. Well, I, I would say, actually, Temple University does have a program like-
Good.
...like that, that reaches out to, where there are opportunities to reach out to students who are experiencing some, some challenges, if somebody makes the recommendation. So in that sense, Temple is doing a great job.
Good.
But there are some additional supports and preventative efforts that could, that could definitely be done. And it's not just suicide, it's not just schizophrenia, or the first episode of schizophrenia, it's suicide rates are very high on-
People with invisible disabilities, and traumatic brain injury, epilepsy, and brain surgery are just three of, a number of what I've experienced, starting at 19. And I am now 47. And there has been no true help, except for me and my drive and determination and faith in God. Without those, I wouldn't be here, literally, and my God-gifted heart, or I would not be here. The discrimination has been ridiculous, especially towards those of us with epilepsy. I did not hear one person mention that word. Those children with autism, 30% of them have epilepsy. Adults, even young people, who can end up with strokes and brain cancer, higher risk and traumatic brain injury also, I know is the cause of mine for epilepsy. The discrimination towards trying to get jobs with that, they would prefer us to lie on applications and lie interviews. The advocate I've been, there's no reason to. Why should I have to lie? There's like 40 different kinds of seizures. It's the oldest, it's the largest neurological disorder in this country and world. It's as old as us humans. And it's enough. Some of the greatest people who made, who made differences in this country and world had it and have it. And silence doesn't heal or make a difference for anything, not even find a cure for it. The sound is what made the difference for the cancer, the breast cancer, it's what made the difference for the diabetes. And even with that diabetes, it's one of the scariest side effects for diabetes is the seizures. But too many CEOs and employers think a liability instead of using their brain. And that right there, the brain, is where the epilepsy is, and it's nothing to take for granted. So these employers and the CEOs need to start using their brains the right way and start learning. That if we're living this and surviving this, you should give us a chance and hire us and not hold against, because to survive these things, I've had near-death experiences, the strength that it takes to do it, I also survived a breast cancer just almost a year and a half ago. That didn't scare me, because my brain meant more. Your breasts don't do anything for your reading, your writing, your comprehension, nothing. Your memory, it does nothing like that. But you hear so much, and you hear so many violins for it. I got them cut out because I knew that the chemo and the radiation could be more damaging. It's just been enough. And I heard that gentleman also mention suicide. That's one of the highest things for people with this. I was one of the people, starting 23 years ago, who wrote to you politicians and called them about traumatic brain injury and epilepsy, for all those football players and ice hockey players and boxers, and telling them that those things are games, but the brains ain't toys, and enough already. The brain is too much, it's not replaceable. You only get one, and that's all you have to work with. It's what does everything, even with all this technology today. It takes the brain to make it work. All of us, each and every one of us with these disabilities, all the different kinds that we have, all the different levels, how you accommodate and how you adjust to it, it takes the brain. Growing up, I always had such passion and respect for Helen Keller. I always believed that those that are blind can see better than those of us that can see. Anyone who wants to discriminate against any of us with a disability should be ashamed and embarrassed. Not one single person with a disability should ever feel that way. I'm trying to get the name changed to Unique Abilities, because each and every one of us are so unique, and it happens at any time and at any age. Like I said, mine began at 19, my traumatic brain injury from pulling off a side street and someone crashing into me. I had no idea to what degree it was going to change my life. I had gone to college, got an associate's degree, I graduated with honors, I was tutoring others, and then five years later, poof, epilepsy began, and everything changed. I couldn't read, I couldn't write, but I didn't stop trying. And then I got two inches of my brain cut out, and again, I needed therapy, but I never stopped trying. And everyone left me when I needed them most, because they just feared what they didn't understand. I'm still here for a reason. And the reason is, I don't want to see anyone go through what I've been through. And that's the lack of awareness, care, help, and support, and respect, period. Because we are the most discriminated against, and we are the biggest minority in this country. And it's enough already, more than enough, because I can't stand it, and it's not right. Last thing I ever wanted to be doing was living on disability. I had had health insurance before it came into my life. When it turned into epilepsy, my health insurance said goodbye. I had no choice to make my life and my health my priority, and had to get onto disability, and I had to fight for that like crazy. And believe me, because without I wouldn't be alive, because you don't live without health insurance when you have illnesses. That's a fact. And now with Obamacare, and I helped with that, I've campaigned for plenty of politicians, and I even helped with that Obamacare, making all the phone calls. Anyone who has a problem with understanding that, please, I let them know. If you have a car, it's a law for that to be insured, and you don't have a problem with understanding that, your life's more valuable than that car. That car's replaceable, you're not. Get over it. Until it happens to you, don't take it for granted, value it. I can't tell people enough, health is your greatest wealth. So please, it's enough. Right down to the fact also, I have it written down, because my memory, I think I left it on my phone, but also, the assistance and service that has been put on freeze, people like me with the invisible, after my traumatic, after my brain surgery, I had needed to get speech therapy and occupational therapy, and then the kind of service I should be able to have is on freeze for cognitive assistance, as opposed to the kind that is open right now, the other kind is on freeze, I can't remember the proper word, I believe it's the cognitive, that's on freeze, they say for financial, the only kind that's open are for people who need physical help for taking showers and doing things like that, where I can do all that kinds of stuff on my own. But I need help with other things. Looking at me, judge me by a cover, please. I can guess then how you go to a library and think you know about a book. You don't know a thing about what you're reading if you're going to judge it by a cover. Even by the way I look or sound right now, like I say. My reading, my writing, my, I couldn't do a thing like this even seven years ago, or even say a word on right now. So that cognitive organ, side of the assistance that has been on freeze, I wish I could remember the name, I wish I knew that this was happening today, I would have had a lot more written, but I had no idea. I'd love to know if this is going to be happening next month, more and more, because the city, this country, and this world, or should I say the city and the state, and this world needs it, or this country needs it, forgive me. See, it's things like that, like that gentleman was saying about, or one of these people were saying about how we can say words and say things. I've had so many doors shut on me because I'm misunderstood. I'm just speaking the best I can and getting words out as well as I can, because I couldn't even speak six years ago, seven years ago, even five years, and I couldn't even dress myself. I could dress myself, but I couldn't remember how to dress myself with style or anything like that. So, or even remember how to write or which hand I wrote with. But it's drive and determination, I'm trying my darndest to be help and inspiration and living proof, but it's not easy, because nobody wants to give us chances. And each and every one of us with disability, I'm sure the majority of us, we want to be working. And it sickens me that people who don't have anything like this think, oh, people on disability, it's so easy for them. Now, it's not the last thing we want. We don't want to not be working. We want to be able to have rights to have lives and make money, but we had to have health insurance, or we wouldn't have lives. We have rights, and it's just enough. We have the hardest job, it's 24/7, we didn't apply for. The way I see it is, God chooses the strongest for these kinds of jobs, because it takes strength beyond. Like you were saying before, somebody you know who works, it- There are people who don't take lives for granted, who value lives, because you can't take a single thing with you when you die. While you're here, value it. I came from money, a family with money, and they thought money was more important, that's why they ran for me. I know the differences. Life's more valuable. But working helps so much, because I ended up with depression and bipolar, on top of it all, because of all the frustration that added to this ignorance that exists in this city and state and country. The ignorance is disgusting, absolutely disgusting, and it needs to change. It's enough already. It's sicker than any of our sicknesses.
Thank you. I would, I thank you very, very much for your testimony here today. You touched on a number of themes, but I think the most important one is that this is a civil rights issue, and it is the new civil rights, and we all have to be aware of that. When I first started advocating for individuals with disabilities, I fought for the approved private schools, and they were the blind, the deaf, the cerebral palsy, the autistic and Down Syndrome, and mentally ill. And I can tell you that it changed my life, it made me a better person, made me a better legislator, and certainly a better dad. I say that all the time. I first met a deputy secretary who wanted to do something for brain injuries, and, and he actually did me a big favor by saying, there's no room for you advocating for autism, because we have to do this first. That gave me a discipline that instructed me that, or enabled me, that we have to advocate for everybody with a disability, because individuals have multiple challenges. And, and it did force me to go out and create services for individuals with autism, because there were other systems that were out there, and there wasn't anything there. And our goal was always to build systems that we could reach back and, and help other disability communities in our efforts. The seizures are something that cross disabilities, and I'm, I'm very much concerned about the behavioral or the chemical restraint that we have instead of functional behavioral analysis that we apply chemical remedies. And we don't know often what the effects of these drugs have on individuals and the combination of those drugs have. So certainly, our schools of pharmacology have to be incorporated into this discussion so that we can better analyze those effects. But I will also tell Harry and all the other disability groups that, as long as I'm being criticized for favoring one group over the other, I think it's like everything else, I'm probably doing my job. But this conversation is something that is very personal to me. It's, I, I know Cindy and so many of the other council people. This is a conversation that deserves all of our efforts. And, and I think as we explore Obamacare, there are great opportunities under, as we looked at the Mental Health Parity Act, and as that's incorporated in the Obamacare, there are great opportunities for expansion of other services and, and financial resources through Obamacare. And we're going to lead the charge, as we always should in Pennsylvania, to lead the country on these forward-looking and progressive instruments and tools. But I want to thank everybody here today for the wonderful testimony that you've given, and thank you very much for sharing your-
One more thing.
...personal-
It was cognitive facilitators what I feel needs to be corrected, and money needs to be found for.
Right.
And as far as your thing for medication, I also, I health mentors students, and I'm living proof of what medicine can and can't be, because medicine, please, we know for epilepsy with cannabis, and that's why that also needs to be legalized in the state already.
And, and I want to thank everybody for being here today, and-
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
You know, I just want to add really quickly. So for, for the young lady who just spoke, I'm sorry, Judy. Okay, so I did want to thank you also for your statement in terms of the, the term of disabilities, which I've never felt comfortable with, and the term of unique abilities, which is something that I'm going to try to incorporate into my vocabulary as well, because I think that that's much more appropriate. But I also wanted to say really quickly to Harry, in reference to his comments on, you know, the, the deaf community, and really want to make sure that it's, you know, something that we don't forget about. So please, any ideas or suggestions or conversations, we're certainly open to having, and want to make sure are included in our thought process. So looking forward to having those conversations.
So is there anyone else here to testify? Seeing no one else, the business before this committee, the disabled and special needs today, the public hearing on resolution number 150027 is recessed until the call of the chair. Thank you all very much for your attendance.